This is an important enough article that we want to have it on the town meeting warrant, or if it can be postponed to sort of better protect the health of the residents of Concord. So I wanted to make that clear. I had distributed to you a list of all the warrant articles in some kind of order. Jeremy, I think, sent you an updated one earlier today because I had left off of it, Article 52, debt precision. And so that's put on there. So to try to make some progress on it, does everybody have that piece of paper with articles?
Yes.
Good, okay. So the first set of articles on there are articles that have been recommended to be on, or the town moderator has indicated that she intends to place articles on the consent calendar.
Mike, can I interrupt you for one second? Just, I had done a pre-meeting, because we have 15 members, it's a big, big group to try to corral. So I had done a little bit of a pre-meeting request that my members show interest in discussing particular items that may arrive on, you know, how they've been placed. And I've assembled that, and if I could share my screen, it'll just show us what the collected interest of the members of the Finance Committee is so far, and that may help us in shortening down the conversation. We can ignore it, but let me just share my screen for one second, and we'll, I also distributed this to everyone via email. And there is my list. So there is our list, which is seven, the ones on the consent agenda were, that we had interest in discussing, were 7, 8, 17, 23, 24, 29, and 44. And then there are two on the list that are to be moved, and that is 16 and 30. And I also had a note that 51 unpaid bills, which I think Terry also identified, was missing. So that, that is our, that was our expressed interest before the meeting that my members had, that we've assembled. So if that helps us, great. If you want to just go through them in order, that's also fine, however you want to proceed, Mike, it's fine with us.
All right, could you, I've written this all down, consent agenda to be moved. Okay, now, let me just ask you, Dean, when you say you want to discuss it, is it discussing the merits of the article?
No. The way I expressed it to the members in my email was, this is the list that had been assembled in collaboration with the moderator, Mary and I, and you and Linda. So the five of us had arrived at the list that was part of the agenda, and if any of our members felt that they'd like to have a discussion about the placement on these lists of any of these articles, please send me that, and I'll assemble it as a list. So everything else on these lists, I guess, I'm going to take as an indication that my membership is happy with their placement. And these, they would just like to discuss, they may stay where they are after discussion, but these are ones that the FinCom membership expressed interest in discussing.
Let's go through the first, the first item. So what I want to try to do is take them up, I'm going to take them up in categories. So the Select Board, we didn't do any pre-meeting deliberation, I just distributed this to, to the members, so.
To be clear, for open meeting purposes, we didn't deliberate. I said, I gave, asked for information, and I just assembled, so there was no sharing, and we didn't, okay? Just so we're clear, okay?
Let me ask the Select Board, with respect to those items that are on the proposed consent calendar, are there any on there that you have questions about or want to discuss their placement? So I don't, I don't see any hands. All right, then, let's go through.
Terry's.
Terry?
Sorry, I was just unmuting myself. I think this group today should discuss Article 44, Community Preservation, a little bit more.
All right, we're talking about articles that are on the list of the proposed consent calendar.
Right.
Do you have any, does 44, is a CPC one, is that the one you're interested in?
Yes.
Okay. So that's also on the Finance Committee list, so, and are there any other from the Select Board? Okay, so let's go through it. Item number one is Article Number 7. This is the COLA-based one. Who on your committee had a concern, Dean?
I did.
Yeah, so, yeah, go ahead, express your concern.
Yeah, hi, this is Chris Reynolds. My only concern was, given that it was, I don't, I don't think it's particularly controversial, but given that it's a, an ongoing increase, so it'll be, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year going forward, and it's related to retirement benefit, I just wondered whether people felt that one, the public would like to get a vote on, or see a discussion of.
Okay, let, let me just remind you, and Carmen, if I don't get it right, chime in, some of the articles on there, anybody can move to take an article off the consent calendar, and I think the moderator has indicated that if 10 people so, a desire, an article will be taken off. All right, so other comments, if I get it right, Carmen?
Yes, that's right.
John?
Yeah, on, still on Article 7, are we?
Yes, sir.
So I received a battlefield promotion to observe that committee on a couple of occasions, and it was my sense that we had requested more information from them with respect to some kind of benchmarking with other towns, which they did, which they did with respect to the base level that the COLA kicks in, but we had asked them to give us more information on the rate of increase that other towns used. And my point was, was not a moot one, it was that other towns that use a higher base may use a smaller percentage increase, and it may actually result in less money. And I felt it was important that we know that information and have that data. So it's partly the fact that we never got it, and it's partly the fact that, well, we just don't know how we stand vis-à-vis other, other towns.
So, John, lacking that information, I, and they didn't respond, I agree, they did not respond. I did that research and distributed an email that contained as deep a pool of that information as is actively, is available, is as available as they could have found, which was three years of data that's collected by a specific organization, publishes a newsletter annually regarding this information. So I do feel as though the FinCom was apprised of the, of the information regardless of the fact that the committee themselves was not responsive. So I don't know that we're, we're going to get anything further.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, time, of course, is the essence. Well, I would agree with, with Christine, that maybe this is one that people should have some, some voice in.
All right, are there any other comments on this article? Carmen?
I, I just want to make one observation, and that is that the use of the consent calendar this year is a lot more robust than it ordinarily is, and, and I see that as a pandemic thing, which will go away as soon as we're not in a pandemic circumstance. In the ordinary course, the only things that go on the consent calendar are routine and non-controversial items. And the way I would articulate the expansion here is to say that there are included on the proposed consent calendar some items that are not routine, but are expected to have broad community support, and also will have the affirmative, a recommendation for affirmative action from both the Select Board and the Finance Committee. So I do plan to remove from the consent calendar anything that does not have a recommendation for affirmative action by either the Select Board or the Finance Committee. So I think that that's important for the citizenry. The citizenry will vote, but for them to vote without deliberation, I think they need to know that both the Finance Committee and the Select Board are, are behind the article so that they can feel a lot more comfortable in voting without deliberation. I just wanted to make that observation.
Thank you. Mary?
Just a quick comment, I just want to remind us that on June 4th, the Finance Committee did vote unanimously to recommend affirmative action on this article.
Yes. All right, and the Select Board is, has it on its agenda tonight, it has the entire current consent calendar on its agenda tonight to take positions on. Terry?
In debating and deciding whether something should be on the consent calendar or not for this town meeting, I would like to err on the side of making as short and efficient a town meeting as possible, because there are two mechanisms after today where things can still come off the consent calendar. One is, as Carmen just said, if both of our boards do not recommend affirmative action, and secondly, if 10 voters want to discuss it, then I'm happy to spend time at town meeting discussing it. But I think in this case, I would like to take the risk that, you know, let's ask the voters, put it on the consent calendar, and if 10 of them say, no, no, we want to discuss it, great. But if they don't, then we've saved some time at town meeting, which I would prefer, because I think there are some very important articles here that are going to require important discussion, and I'd like to save the time for those articles.
Any other comments on, on this article? All right, so tonight, we, we already, as Mary pointed out, the Finance Committee has already voted affirmative action on this, and the Select Board will deal with this at our meeting just later this afternoon. The next article on the Finance Committee's list was Article 8, Use of Free Cash. And I don't know who it was that had a concern about that, Dean?
So I have my list, hold on. I have to go to the, to the, that was you, John, you concerned about that?
My, my question related to how long the level had been at this dollar amount, and whether that level should be considered changed or indexed to something going forward. That was, that was my question and concern.
I don't know the long history, but I know we've been doing it ever since I was on the Finance Committee, so that's probably, you know, 12, 12 or so, 12 or so years.
Generally speaking, there is a, there is a level of indexing that goes on here, John, and that's at about 1%, but it's, some of it's driven by the savings that occur during the operation of the prior year budget, and also the possible overages in revenue that arise, that were unanticipated by the budgeting. So the marrying of those two, the savings in town operations and the potentially larger revenues, contribute to this. That is going to be different this year, we know that, but we're not discussing the merits of the thing, not the whether it belongs on the consent. So I, we need to be careful about these conversations, I think that's the most important.
Carmen, did you?
Yeah.
Hey, I just wanted to note that this particular article typically ends up on the consent calendar.
Almost always. Any other comments or concerns about Article 8? All right, so next item on the list is Article 17, Light Plan Expenditure and Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Again, Dean, I don't know who the first ones who had a concern.
See, who was that? I think that Andrea had some interest there. The main concern we have there is that there's going to be a modification of the pilot, and I think we're going to hear about that in the hearing, because they're going to have a, you know, a refreshed budget, and their revenue projection, you know, their net revenue projection, which drives their pilot, will be a new number. So we're going to rehear this, but I don't think that it will be controversial, you know, the result will ultimately be controversial. Is that, Andrea, you speak up, you got to unmute yourself, you want to chime in here.
I don't.
You're muted, but that's, she's shaking her head, so I don't think she has that.
Icon in the lower left corner.
There you go.
No, I think you responded to my question in saying that this was going to be coming up at a hearing, and we'll, we'll get the information then.
All right, thank you, Andrea. Any other comments on Article 17? Seeing none, the next one is Article 23, that's the BD Center and Fitness Center. Again, Dean?
We have two members here who have interest in this. Andrea's one, I'm another, but basically, I'm, I'm not unhappy leaving this here, I just think that this is going to be, there's going to be a major change between what was, you know, the BD has undergone radical budgetary, you know, problems. So I guess we could, we could, I'm happy leaving this on the consent calendar, and we'll hear something about this in the, in the hearing. Andrea, do you, would you concur with that?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how going forward there, based on what I've heard about the plans for opening and what's going on, I, I'm not sure how they're going to move forward on this. So I, I concur with you, to wait for the hearing.
So we'll hear about, more about this at the hearing. Any other comments on this article? All right, then, Article 24, Minuteman High School.
Yeah, so that was, that was me, I know, for one person, anyway, so this is Chris Reynolds. My question was really more, it's, it's a big ask, it's, it's a million bucks, so it was just the size of it, it is an education-related payment. Again, I don't think it's controversial, but it has grown a lot, so that's why my question was, should it be on consent?
We just, also had a question about this one?
Right, I did, and I know that in Mary's response to my, my interest in having this discussed, that we had already, not we, but other towns had already approved the budget. And Chris, when you were talking one time about their budget, and, you know, nothing had changed, and you were a little surprised at that, that registered with me, because I thought, you know, maybe if they haven't, between the time they set the budget and when the year starts, there may be some other changes that occur that are going to have a financial impact. So my concern about having this on the consent agenda is a, a more of a what-if. If their numbers do change, and I don't know if they legally can or not at this point, but if their numbers do change, and we have it on a consent agenda, how would, how would that work?
I can answer that, I think, because I believe enough towns have approved their budget, that, and the year has started, so that's it now, it doesn't even matter really what Concord votes.
Okay.
But this is basically, is basically an assessment at this point, it's not really, yeah.
Yeah. If I might add, if my memory is correct, the Minuteman Charter is an odd thing in that, once the school committee for Minuteman votes something as an assessment for the communities, it's, I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that it's automatically ratified by the communities, if the communities don't act to vote against it within a certain period of time. And my guess is, we're past the period of time. But that would be a thing to look into, but I, I'm pretty sure that that's what the situation is for Minuteman.
Okay, let's.
All right. Well, I'm all right then, I just wanted to.
See if we can get some facts about that. I think also, I tried to check while De was speaking, but I think we received a, Carrie, are you on the?
I am.
Did we receive a recent update?
We, we've received our final assessment for Fiscal 21.
And how does it differ from what we had?
It doesn't, it's the same as what's published in the warrant.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so next item is the Middle School Stabilization Fund. Again, Dean, who on your committee?
So, Middle School Stabilization, I think, Andrea, you had some concerns about, you know, this is a very large number, and the group, the smaller group had decided to place this on the consent agenda. We did have a little bit of conversation about that. Oh, I can't take this call. I got to call these people back. My dog was bitten by another dog, I'm getting into some issues with, with like rabies control and this kind of thing, so my phone's ringing, I'm sorry. The concern was, this is a very large item, but Matt Johnson also made the point that this is a very large item and would not normally be on the consent agenda. So Andrea, I don't want to preempt anything you might want to say about that, so why don't you go?
I just thought we needed an update, or, because it is a large number, where we were going with this. So if, I don't have anything else to say about it, if, if we're going to, so.
Well, remember, Andrea, for all of us, this is a non-expenditure, but simply putting some money aside. So if it turns out that something happens to the middle school project, or we decide we don't want to do anymore, you know, the, the money doesn't get actually spent unless it comes back to town meeting for a specific authorization. So it takes two, one to create the fund, and then it takes a separate, takes a separate vote to actually authorize the expenditure of those funds.
And I would add to that, town meeting has the capacity to undo it at a future point as well.
So if we decide in the future we don't want to do it, we just resend it, and the money goes back to the general fund. All right, that brings us to the Community Preservation Act. That was on both your committees' list, and Terry had a concern about that, so why don't we start with your committee, Dean?
Yeah, so, so John had a concern about that, and Andrea both had registered some interest in understanding its positioning on this list as a, you know, should it be debated? There are a few touchy projects on this that, you know, may engender, would engender debate if it was not just slid through on the consent calendar. And the question is, do we want to make that the default position, or should we leave it here and, and just try to make the, get the meeting to move along? That's all.
All right, before I turn to John and Andrea, I think the moderator, correct me again, Carmen, her intent here was that if it is on the consent calendar, and if some number of citizens want a particular component of the appropriation taken off the consent calendar, am I correct in remembering that was something that you would permit?
Yeah, certainly. So the Article 44 is split into the, what is it, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 projects by letter. And so it would be entirely appropriate for any 10 voters to take any one of these lettered, or more of these lettered projects off of the consent calendar for full discussion. It's also open to us in the first instance to place certain letter projects out of Article 44 on the consent calendar, and leave others of them to be taken up in the ordinary course of the warrant for full deliberation.
Well, I, I like the idea, for the reason, Carmen, I like the idea of leaving it on here, and then if somebody wants to take 44B, or whatever the article is they want off, off it can come, it just seems more efficient to me, rather than having to move, move the article separately, and then move again to take something off. So anyway, John or Andrea, who wants to chime in?
Can I just ask one question about that to Carmen? And that is, when you enumerate the list of the consent calendar items, looking for 10 votes, will you stop at 44 and enumerate down the letter, the letters? So that, you will do that? Okay, that's fine.
John, Andrea?
That's fine.
So as in our meeting, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Andrea, are you finished?
Me?
Yeah. Okay. My concern remains exposing the town to the liability of a couple of the projects, and that was my objection in our meeting, and, and it's still a concern.
The liability, just to be clear, John's mention of liability is that there would be some liability that we would be having to engage in litigation to defend the, the funding of a couple of these line items, and so that might expose us to some additional expense.
Carrie?
My concern, again, is about moving the meeting along in the best way, and I'm just imagining, Carmen, when you get, are you going to read through the list of all the consent calendar articles, like number 3, number 4, and each one you stop and pause, and then when you get to 44, it's 44A, you pause, I mean, trying to imagine exactly how this is going to happen, and whether we're going to get bogged down when we get to this one.
So, Terry, it'll, 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 the process will work the way it always does with the consent calendar at town meeting, except this year we won't have a PowerPoint up on the screen. Usually I have a PowerPoint up on the screen that has a quick summary of each article, and a quick note of the reason why the article is on the consent calendar, and typically there's also an indication of what the recommendation of the Select Board and the Finance Committee is on the article, as well as the zoning board, if it's a zoning article. This, this time, we will have in the meeting materials that will be distributed, a printout of the consent calendar, it's going to have the same information, it'll have the description, a little note about why it's there, it'll have an indication of what the recommendations are from SB, FinCom, and Planning Board, and I will read through them one at a time and simply ask, is there anyone who would like to place a hold on Article 2, Article 3? And if I see a voting card up, I'm going to ask, are there nine more people who would also like to place a hold? And if we get 10, then that's off, and we continue. And then we'll know when we get through that list, whether we have the entire slate of articles that was on the consent calendar for vote, or whether we have the slate minus one or two articles that people have pulled off that we'll take up in the order, in the order in which we get to them.
Okay, so I have two follow-up questions about that. The first one is, Carmen, about 44, are you going to list it in the handout as 44A, 44B? I guess I would suggest doing that.
Yes, yep, we certainly would, we would have the entire article there.
Okay, awesome, that's great. And then my second question is directed toward Dean and the Finance Committee. I don't know if you've taken a position yet on this article, and if you haven't.
We, we, it took us multiple meetings to deliberate on this, and we have come to a unanimous, we're, we're, we approve of this article in all of its parts. And that, I don't recall whether, John, you know, you declined on one or two, but we, we all, we all have agreed, and the Finance Committee has voted affirmative action on, on this in its entirety.
And again, the Select Board will take this up this afternoon. De?
I just have, in defense of the Community Preservation Group, and the fact that this is taxpayer dollars that are being spent, I found it very difficult when I was going through the list of, of items to be on the consent agenda, that I saw this article on the consent agenda. I completely understand why it is there in terms of the amount of discussion that could take place, but I, I don't think it's, it's an appropriate article to have on a consent agenda. And I just want to say that, I know we've already, the Finance Committee has already passed the article, and, and I'm in full agreement with that, I just find that it's, it's a difficult one for me to have on a consent agenda.
De, and your underlying reason, De?
I think that it's, these are tax dollars that are spent, and I do believe it's in the community's best interest that tax- And I do believe it's in the community's best interest that taxpayers have a clear understanding of how the dollars are being spent and the intention of the committee that recommends these decisions. It is, it's a lot of money. It's over a million dollars, 1.7 probably this year. And I just feel as though the community should have, should be more involved in understanding how their money is spent.
All right, thank you. Carmen?
So Dee, I couldn't agree with you more than in an ordinary year, we don't put this article on the consent calendar. And, and incidentally, it only occurred to me to put this article, to suggest putting it on the consent calendar when I learned that there are some other towns that routinely put the community preservation projects on the consent calendar. And I'd heard that from one town and, and checked in there and said, boy, do you usually do that or is that just this year? And it is apparently a common thing for them to put it on their consent calendar. So this caused me to consider, well, perhaps as a deviation from our usual practice, we could do that this year because we do typically spend quite a bit of time hearing about the projects and sometimes there are questions. And this year we would ask people to get their information from, the hearing was great. There was, I rewatched the hearing that include, the finance committee hearing that included the Community Preservation Act article. There was one of the best presentations by town council and Q and A by the finance committee with town council afterwards on, in particular, the projects for the two churches. It was a very good hearing. It was a really very good hearing. And the full thing is on the website, available for anybody to go watch it and listen to it. And there wasn't a question, I don't, and there might be a question, but really the depth and breadth of the questions that were asked by the finance committee are going to fully inform the public. That said, if there's any 10 people out of the several hundred that we expect we will see at town meeting who say, yeah, no, I want to hear some more about that. I think we need to talk about it, they can pull it off.
Okay, just one final remark. Going back to Carmen, your observation about towns that routinely have the community preservation recommendations in their consent agenda, there are numerous towns in the, in the state for which all of the projects are town-related projects. We are very different here in the sense that we do have nonprofit organizations and, you know, we are a historic city, so our town. So I just, I just wanted to clarify, clarify that for you.
All right, thank you. Is there any more comments on 44? All right. The next grouping here are just Article 33 and 43 and just.
Michael, this is pressure. So it sounds like, I just want to confirm what I heard. It sounds like the FinCom overall, we don't have concerns with those articles that are, that you proposed leaving in the consent calendar, is that correct?
I think your chairman said you voted affirmative action unanimously on it.
I, I, I agree. I just want to make sure because I know various members have raised questions, but I'm assuming no one's raised enough concerns that we're going to withdraw any of them.
Well, again, this, this isn't to be a debate about the wisdom of the article, only whether or not we think it should be placed on the consent calendar. You folks are perfectly free to revisit an article if you, if you so choose Carmen.
Yeah, and if I just might reiterate, in the event that there is a recommendation against, that's not for affirmative action on any article that's on the consent calendar or any, or in the, in the case of the CPC appropriations, any particular project, that's coming off. I, I, I do not want it on the consent calendar for the voters unless both of these committees are in favor of it.
All right, thank you John. All right. The next, just for clarity, the next is Articles 33 and 43. And you recall, I think, that Carmen had pointed out to me that if a planning board or zoning article is either not moved or is, is defeated at a town meeting, it could not come back to town meeting for two years. So rather than postpone these two, there'll be a motion on these two articles, simply refer back to planning, to the planning board for further consideration. So is there any objection or concern about that action?
Just.
Linda?
Just one clarification. So Article 43 was a citizen petition, was it not?
Yes.
And so we, we have agreement?
I, I do, and I have reached out to the citizen petitioner again, just to confirm that he's comfortable with that and to let him know that it wouldn't be a postponement, it would be a refer to committee motion in order to avoid him being barred from bringing this article back to town meeting for two years. So I need to close that loop. I haven't yet heard back from the citizen petitioner, but that is my understanding is that he's okay with delaying consideration of this particular article to a future meeting.
Thank you.
All right. The next category here, articles where either no motion is expected or a motion to postpone. And that is Articles 6, 9, 28, 31, 40, and 49.
51 should be added. That's unpaid bills.
50, yes, thank you very much. 51, there'll be no motion expected on that. Any concern about those? Carmen, I, I, I don't know what you're going to prefer. Are you going to prefer a motion to postpone and then this list of motions? Or are you just going to suggest that when we get to Article 6, you say, no motion is expected?
I, I, I think my preference is to just deal with the articles as we get to them once we've gotten past the consent calendar.
So we'll do six motions as opposed to one?
No, because let's see, the Article 6, Article 9, Article 28, Article 31, Article 40, they're, they're just all, these are all just no motion expected. There's no postponements there. And so what that involves is when we get to that article, I will just declare that we, that I have no motion and therefore declare that the meeting is taking no action and we proceed to the next article.
Great, all right. Thank you very much.
Mike?
Can I just ask one procedural question about 40? 40 was presented by Alice to the select board. Has the, is the select board the sponsor of that? So it could just be go into no motion mode or do we have to reach out to the, to the folks who presented this and brought it as a?
It's a select board. It's a select, it's a select board article.
It is a select board article. Okay, thank you.
Mike, before you move on, Article 52 could actually be, should actually be moved to the grouping where no motion is expected.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't pick up on that earlier.
You're right. Okay, thank you. So we'll add that to the list then. And then the last category are articles to be moved. Now, let me say as a preface to this, and this is a little tricky, at least for me. There are obviously ones on here that were, that we know we need to deal with, town budgets, all of that kind of stuff. But there are also, there are also a number of citizen petitions on here. And I think our obligation is, is to understand whether or not we're just going to go ahead or whether we're going to suggest that these be postponed. And again, my concern is not whether I support any of the particular articles or not, but just in the interest of dealing with so many articles when, when we've got this medical issue and health issue to be concerned about. So first, why don't we go through those articles that the finance committee had identified? The first Article 16, that's tax increment financing one. I don't know what the concern raised there was Dee.
So on the list is John, but I also have a concern for this, so I'll preempt you John and speak first. My concern about this particular item is that this is going to be a large, you know, drawdown of this, of the meeting's time. It, you know, we are, we are obviously intent on affordable, getting affordable housing in the community and it, it's not a, an indication that we definitely support or don't support this. We need the town to come to a conclusion on, on whether or not to grant this tax relief, which is a multi-year, the request is 17 years of tax relief. So it is something the town does have to grapple with, but my question is, can the project be, you know, placed in a, you know, in a sort of a freeze until a special town meeting when we are in a, you know, more luxurious capacity to, to debate it? Yeah, I don't know, but I'm just, I would prefer to see this one moved into the deferral category. And if the project promoters are, say, if we wait, you know, some grants or some of their tax, they have, they get these tax credits. If anything evaporates and makes the project collapse, we, we need to hear that before we, we commence, but that's my concern. I, I would, you know, I would, the town needs to grapple with this, but I'm not sure we need to grapple with it right this minute.
John?
My turn again. I'm feeling like the skunk at the garden party here. Dean, I agree with all that you've said. My, my understanding was that there had been some news, some development on the part of the tax credits for the company. Maybe that's something that Kerry is, is aware of. So, so, so my question was, has there not been news on this that we should be aware of as we, as we go into the, to the meeting?
Yes, there is news. They were granted $7.6 million in tax credit. And their expectation is that that will net them about $6.3 million when they go to, go to market with them. I have spoken with Walter once and I've sent another email asking essentially the question that Dean, Dean raised. When the first time I spoke with him, he was quite sure that this needed to go ahead or the project would collapse. But I've reached out to him again and I haven't heard back from him yet. I'm sure I will very soon and I can get that information to you guys as, as soon as I have. And I suspect frankly, that even if we decided to postpone this, I suspect Walter would probably ask it to be moved. But let me get the facts from him before I call, for Carmen.
I just wanted to note just a couple of procedural things and, and tell you one, perhaps a helpful example. I just want to remind everybody that we will not have any presentations at annual town meeting. And the limit, time limit on remarks from the floor will be one minute. And I am planning to strictly enforce that limit and turn off microphones in order to keep us moving along. So those two things will certainly speed consideration even on a controversial article. The second thing I just want to note is that the town of Bedford on their, at their outdoor annual town meeting last Saturday, when it was what, 90 degrees and my God, but they had a TIF that they took up as a special town meeting warrant article within their annual town meeting. There was some controversy about it, but it was dealt with pretty efficiently and it was voted on and it did not seem to drag the meeting down terribly. They finished their meeting in, I think, maybe two and a half hours. They did postpone a lot more articles than we are postponing, but they also had a lot of articles on their consent calendar as we are doing.
Let me, let me say that after we have this meeting today and then the select board meets, we, I think I've suggested that we get a group together, maybe it's Mary, Linda, Dean and me and the moderator again, to figure out which of the articles we need to revisit in a public hearing. And this would certainly be a candidate, candidate for that. There's new facts and we want to have perhaps a, a much more detailed public hearing about this. It would probably be a joint finance committee, select board, public hearing. So after we get through with this agenda, the next task for us is to make sure that we've gone, Carmen, I know you've spent a lot of time reviewing the public hearings, but going back to make sure that when we ask the public to go to the town's website to get information that there in fact is a good body of information there in all of these warrant articles. All right. Any other comments on 16? Excuse me. Mary?
I have a question. I, I know that there might be an amendment made to this article. Will that be part of the hearing? Will, will that be made public during the hearing so that?
If a person's planning, if the person who is planning to make the amendment says so in the public hearing, no requirement. There is a requirement at town meeting though to have in writing or through text, I'm not sure if I'm correct there Carmen, through text to the town moderator, any warrant and she, amendments, and she has certainly encouraged people in her town meeting protocol to, to have an amendment, to not wait to town meeting to get it to her so that we don't get bogged down in passing paper around and warding and all that crap.
Right. No, I'm just going, your comment that the hearing is also a good way to air people's opinions. I think it would also be helpful if at the hearing, we were also able to air how people felt about the amendment, but that's.
Yeah, if somebody brings up the amendment, I certainly, that would certainly be in order for sure.
Good, thank you.
About number, article, the next one on the finance committee's list is Article number 30.
Mike, I think you, you skipped Mr. Swain who had his hand up.
Sorry, didn't see you Phil. Go ahead.
It's just brief, if this is definitely going to be the subject of a hearing, my concern goes away, but it sounds like we're not moving it to consent calendar right now and planning to have a hearing in advance, right? So I did want to add my concern that it shouldn't be on consent either.
Yes, I don't think there's any suggestion that it'd be on the consent calendar.
All right, good.
All right. Healthy School Buses, Article 30. What's the issue there?
So John, you had some questions about that. There's, there's some, there's some word afoot that there might be an amendment to this to restrict the article to just the cash necessary to meet the objective of buying a bus and not an additional amount of cash that would be necessary to build a bunch of infrastructure. So that's, is that, what's your concern John?
That's my concern.
Yeah. Dee?
Yeah, I had several, I do have several concerns that will be raised when we have a hearing on this article because we did not have a hearing on this article yet.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
But I, I do feel, the infrastructure is a good question. It is a legitimate expense with regards to the VW agreement. But my concern of this one is, is that Article 31, which is the, which they call the municipal fleet electrification, that to me should be moved. If you're going to move this one, this should also be moved because that's where the infrastructure will be determined. And when we had the hearing on that one, on Article 31, I did specifically ask Brian how long he thought the electrification committee would, would need in order to come up with the infrastructure and he said a year. Which to me then, the timing of do we, do we order buses before we know if there's a capacity, a daily capacity to meet their needs or not? So I, I just think that, that there needs to be a clear understanding of what comes before something else. Is it, do you have an infrastructure plan in place before you order more buses or not? So I am looking forward to the hearing on this one. I'm really very concerned about, I have a couple of other concerns on this one as well.
But again, this isn't a substance. Well, again, this isn't a substance. We're not trying to, to debate the substance of it here. The question I would have with an article like this, do you, I'd reframe it and say to you, is, is this so time sensitive that we need to take it up at town meeting or could it be postponed? Not whether it's a good idea or a bad idea.
Okay. My, my response to that is I would postpone it.
Okay. And that, that's, to me, that's the, that's the debate. I think the pushback would be if you postpone it, the money goes away.
No, it does not. They have 15 years.
Greg?
Yeah, I, I thought that was the case too. If you did push it back, the money for this previous year, it's sort of like first come, first served basis gets it. I could be wrong. Somebody please correct me though.
Actually, we talked about that when Brian came to the finance committee and this particular article is asking for $200,000 from free cash. And out of that, he said 50,000 was for the actual bus, which is time sensitive because it takes advantage of the VW settlement. The remaining 150,000 was for infrastructure changes that would in fact charge that, that bus and other buses. And, and I, Carmen, I know we spoke about this and did you have a chance to, to ask Brian if he was going to amend this?
I haven't spoken with him, but, but I, but I, I know that the plan is for this article to come up for hearing and you'll certainly hear all about what Brian's plans are for this at hearing.
Yeah, my point is, is that I think part of this is time sensitive and if we postpone it, we, we lose part of the VW settlement, but the major part of this is not time sensitive.
So Carmen, Carmen, let me ask you a moderator question. Would an amendment to that effect, as Mary is sort of suggesting, splitting off that 50,000, which is time sensitive from the infrastructure, which doesn't appear to be, would that be an allowable amendment?
Sure, that would be within the scope because you'd be, you'd be asking the meeting to ask, act on a portion of the article and put off acting on the rest of it or, or just taking no action on the rest of it. That, that would not.
I guess I'm asking the question, could the motion be simply reframed so that all it has in it is the $50,000 that's required to buy the bus?
That would be no problem.
So I think that's a pretty good question for us to raise at the public hearing on this.
The warrant language, to be clear, is very simple. It just says to raise a sum of money, not to exceed $200,000 or any other sum. So if they just say 50,000 and that, that's the only change to the thing, they're just moving a lower number. There's, you don't have to, we don't have to get into any of that. It's just a very simple change and they just move a lower number.
All right, well, let's make sure we deal with that when we have the hearing. And I think that, that's all on the articles. So are, what are your thoughts about some of these other articles? Anybody have any concern about some of these other articles?
So. Article 34, the ZBA the other night was concerned whether or not there would be a hearing on this article. And they were also concerned in terms of procedure for amendments on the floor and their opportunity to confer as, as a committee.
This is, this is Article 34?
Yes, and I think they were also concerned about possibly other zoning articles, but this one in particular.
Yeah. My understanding is that, that the planning board does have to have an additional hearing because they timed out the first hearing, which was only good for six months. You have to have a town meeting within six months, so they do have to have another hearing. So my understanding is this article will be heard again. The procedure on the floor for amendments will be amendments have to be in writing. I can't say yet specifically how amendments in writing can be transmitted to the moderator because we don't, we're, we're still figuring out what kind of wifi and cell service we're going to have in the field. So that's a work in progress at the moment. I'm very actively encouraging anybody who's thinking about an amendment to get it to me well in advance of the meeting. And, you know, as, as often happens, an amendment might be discussed with the proponent of an article and we might go right there instead of needing to amend if the proponent agrees with the amendment. And that, that definitely improves the flow of things at town meeting. So my hope is that anybody who's thinking about an amendment, whether it's a citizen or a committee or a group of citizens will be out with it early and send me an email and I'll make sure everybody who needs to know about it, knows about it and it can be dialogued. And I agree that the hearings are an excellent place to have a discussion about a proposed amendment. So certainly good idea to raise any amendment anybody is thinking about at the hearing. The issue about committees being able to talk with each other, especially if there is an amendment placed on the floor during town meeting, that's an interesting one, Linda. We're thinking about it. One of our hopes is that we'll have enough wifi or cell service that committees can convene their own Zoom call and they can talk to each other by Zoom while they're sitting there. That may not be possible, in which case they're going to have to make sure they sit in the same general area so they can shout at each other from six feet away. We're working on that, but we know that that's an issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other concerns about any of the articles to be moved? John?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, small regression if I may. The finance committee implemented a follow-up kind of policy some time ago. We realized we were asking lots of questions and we didn't really have a systematic way of, of following up with getting the answers. And I think it was Parshar's good idea to, to institute a follow-up program. And Dean, in my, in my questions to, to you, I had asked whether we had had or may have the opportunity to do a follow-up on the follow-ups, so to speak, to look back and see whether there are any other warrant articles that we had any outstanding questions or issues with? Is that even possible?
Yeah, if you have, if you have like, we'll call it on the fly questions now, John, and you didn't express interest to me in the, in the lead up to this, you, you're welcome to raise them. We're in the meeting. I was just trying to help us organize and, you know, get interest upfront. So we, we proceeded in orderly manner, but if there's something else you want to, you want to bring up, go for it.
So the point of my question though, Dean, is to sort of do a look back to refresh all of us as to whether there are any others, any other articles with outstanding questions and issues that I'm not aware of right now. That was sort of the point of the look back.
Not, I, I guess I don't read, I don't understand exactly what you mean by let's do a look back, looking for things.
How did we, how did we keep, how did we keep track of all of our follow-up questions that we identified during our, our regular FinCom meetings?
Regarding follow-up questions, this is a FinCom committee procedural note. We are trying our best to keep those on our minutes as follow-up items that arrive on the next minutes to make, you know, just to prod us. There's a note made on our minutes that this was going to be followed up. And if it doesn't get followed up, it's in the minutes and we review the minutes and go, oh, I better follow up on that. So, you know, I know that's prompted me a few times. So are there any specific look backs that you're, you know, that you're looking for?
Yeah, well, I'm looking for the ones that I'm not, that I, that I, that I don't know about. That's the point.
Okay, I, I don't know how to answer that.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Next question. Next question.
But next, the last article on here is Article 48, which is the historic district commission nominated one. Any new news on that article?
I'll, I'll try again to get in touch with the proponent of the article.
Well, to me, this is absolutely not time sensitive. So I don't, it may be a great idea, but I don't see how this is time sensitive. Terry?
Oh yeah, you, you just didn't see my hand on the previous section. Couple of questions on the articles to be moved. Number 37. Carmen, I understand there's some question that this one possibly be able to go on the consent calendar?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I have a little bit of misgiving about putting this one on because I know there is a, a shortlist who maybe don't number 10 of immediately impacted citizens by this who have a broader principled question about this change. And the question is about the encroachment of commercially zoned areas into residentially zoned areas. So I just wanted to reach out to the citizens I knew were concerned about that, to just take their read. It, it feels a little bit uncomfortable to me to change the rules on how many citizens we need to place a hold on something that's on the consent calendar at the same time as a very small group of people may have a concern. So I just wanted to reach out there, you know, not, not to give that person a veto power, but I, but just to try to be fair to, to, as fair as we can to everybody in the process that we're trying to put together here.
Okay, that makes sense. And my other question is on the petition articles. I'm not sure who I'm directing this question to, but it's about the public hearings. How are the public hearings going to be working for the petition articles?
Well, as I said earlier, after we vote this afternoon on, on some of these articles, then I'm going to suggest that Dean, Mary, Linda and I get back, and Carmen get back together again. And what we try to do then is decide on what articles we need to have a new public hearing. Remember, we've had public hearings on most of these articles, just a few remaining that the finance committee hasn't yet dealt with. And, and then the planning board has to go back in a statutory way to, we've had additional public hearings. But for most of the articles, there already is a public hearing and MinuteMan will get all of those put up. But we need to go back and decide which ones are important enough, complicated enough, substantive enough, controversial enough that we want to revisit them because a lot of time has gone by and, you know, folks don't remember. And so I've already set proposed dates for public hearings off to Dean and Mary and Carmen and Linda. And actually with the revision to that. And so that's the next task. And then we'll come back to both committees with the hope of finalized version of what we went through today. And then with a set of proposed public hearings and the actual articles that will be heard at each of the public hearings. So that's the plan.
So just a suggestion there, it's, it's clear based on Carmen's description of the six-month rule, that the planning board will need to hold a hearing, should we invite the chair, vice chair of the planning board to that collaboration meeting? Or do, do they just know which articles they've got to do and they just, we just plug a date for a, for a hearing for them?
They've got to hear any of the articles that are planning to come before town meeting. I suspect they even need to hear those articles for which we plan to recall them because I think it's required. I happen to have Matt join us, or the new chair. I think we need to, you know, coordinate dates with him to make sure that today, that date's okay with his committee.
Yeah, I guess that's the main thing. We just, we just have a coordinated set of dates that everybody's.
No problem. No problem. All right, Mary?
I have a question about the citizens petitions article. If we have another hearing, that will be one way for the community to hear again what these petitioners are asking. And then when we, if we decide to in fact move them at town meeting, is there some way that we can, I know we're limiting comments to a minute, but Carmen, will you be able to limit comments if they become repetitive and so that we can keep them on the town meeting agenda warrant, but we don't end up spending a lot of time? I think that's what I'm, I'm concerned about. You know, I, I'm trying to balance our tradition of allowing citizen petitions to be heard against this, yes, but we want to get out of there because there's a virus going around. So, you know, I know you're limiting, but can we make some decision now to limit the comments? Because these are going to engender a lot of comments. I guess I'm asking for advice here. What do you, what do you think?
Well, you know, there's so much judgment call involved in what's on topic and, and what's not, and, and the person whose judgment matters is mine in terms of cutting people off or not. You know what, I, I will cut people off who are just clearly not on topic. Repetition is a tough one, Mary. And you've probably watched many times as at town meeting, I've taken a little straw poll on how many people have already made up their minds about how they're going to vote on an article. And all the hands go up and then I ask the many people still standing in line at a microphone whether they want to take that into consideration and perhaps sit down now and no one sits down. So, you know, perhaps the pandemic will change people's minds a little bit and folks who are there will be as eager to be efficient and time sensitive as all of the elected officials and appointed officials are. I, you know, I, I can offer reminders, I can turn off microphones where people are clearly off topic. And I certainly will be turning microphones off where people are passing the one minute mark. And that tends to make people, you know, a nice short timeframe, most, most of what you want to say that it's important can actually be said in a minute and you just have to get straight to your point.
I would add that, again, this is not, this is not burying these citizen petitions. It's just postponing when the town is going to hear them. What the select board did last, last meeting or the meeting before that is they, they passed a motion that if any of the petitioners agrees not to move their motion, the select board would adopt that motion for the next meeting to save them the trouble of having to go out and get signatures and all that kind of junk. So my hope is it continues that these petitioners would, would have public safety in mind unless there's something really time sensitive associated with the motion. Terry?
The follow-up, what Mary and Carmen were just talking about, is it possible, Carmen, to have a separate microphone for someone who is just going to move the question? Because I've seen, really, I've seen many times when you make that statement, no one sits down, since then someone gets in line and now they're like fourth or fifth in line and we're going to listen to all this repetition, blah, blah, blah. Finally, the person gets up there and says, move the question. So is there a way to have separate microphone for that?
Yeah, I don't think so, Terry. Good idea. I don't think so.
Just to, just to.
That idea.
Look at, just, just to look at this from a practical perspective, these articles are at the end of the meeting and the meeting will have its own basic inertia. It will have its own desire to be efficient at that point, I believe. So I think we'll, you know, we'll probably have less repetition just because people are, okay, we've done a lot of really good business here, but it's getting, it's getting late and let's, let's keep moving. So I, I think that there, there will be, you know, we'll gain, we'll gain speed as we go along and, and understand what we're doing.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing no hands, thank you all very much. I think we made some good progress. I look forward to meeting with my select board colleagues in a little while. I'll prepare a revised one of these and get it circulated around. And Mary and Dean and Linda, I will also, after our meeting this, last afternoon, I will propose, and Carmen, propose a, a meeting for us to discuss the schedule and articles for the upcoming revised public hearings. All right?
Correct. Can we get a quick update? Did we make any changes to this list? I don't think we made any.
Not, not yet.
Okay.
No, we've got some more information to gather. Carmen has to speak with, still with a couple of petitioners. And remember, what she has said is that items will be on the consent calendar only of the finance committee and the select board. the Finance Committee and the Select Board both vote affirmative action on the article. So Dean, if I would, could you send me along an updated copy of all of the articles that the Finance Committee has either voted affirmative action or no action on? So I'll do the same to you guys as soon as, Carmen?
I just wanted to make one edit, Mike, to what you just said. I do think there's a change in that Kerry let us know that Article 52, which was on the consent calendar, should instead be on the list of articles where no motion is expected.
And same with Article 51, it was on to be moved and it was moved to the not moved file.
I also think we could probably change that heading to, from whether, where no motion is expected or a motion to postpone to just no motion is expected because right now everything there is no motion is expected.
Yes, all right, I'll do that. I saw two hands, I don't see them now. Oh, I think it was Linda and Terry. Stephen, hi.
Yeah, so just.
Turn the volume up.
I have reached out to the Personnel Board on Article 6.
Turn your volume up.
Oh, I need to sit closer to the good thing then. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I did reach out to the Personnel Board and I did recommend a motion to postpone. I can revise that to take no action, but I think that, I didn't want to indicate to them that we were just not going to, you know, that it was going to be lost to the ages. So I can follow up the communication, but I just wanted to.
You know what, Stephen, I stand corrected that Article 6 is the one article on that list where a motion to postpone was expected. So just leave that heading right where it was and we'll deal with these articles as they come up in the ordinary course.
Carmen, what's the difference in a practical sense from no motion and a motion to postpone?
So in a practical sense, there isn't really a difference because, I mean, that's the reason that we have this song and dance with respect to what we're calling our delay of those zoning bylaws that we're not going to be acting on. We're calling them, we're referring, you were using motions to refer to committee there so that they aren't considered to be no action or no votes by town meeting, but an indefinite postponement motion as no motion expected, both of those are going to be considered to be no action. But I think that there's a real kind of psychological difference if the proponents of an article understand that their article is being postponed and expects, and it will be coming back later as opposed to simply being no motion. So it isn't a practical difference, it's a difference in tone.
Got it. All right, Jane, you're muted.
Yeah, I just, one quick question. When we were discussing the, these Articles 6 through 51 earlier and now 52, the discussion was that Articles 6 through 40 were no motion is expected. What happens with Article 49? Is that just also part of that? We didn't discuss it.
That one also, I guess, is really a motion to postpone rather than just no motion. Yeah.
And the same, would I say the same for fossil fuel infrastructure?
Sure.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you all very much, greatly appreciate it and we'll be back in touch as soon as we can. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here you go.